Morning, everybody. I just want to welcome, welcome everyone to what I believe is our, if I'm counting correctly, town hall meeting with Mayor Roca. And today, we're very pleased to be joined by Alan Register from Regions Bank. And as we've done the last couple of times, if you have questions, I just ask that you hold them until everyone is done presenting. Please use the chat feature that is on at the top if you're using an iPad or elsewhere on the computer and type the question. And then as there's, there are breaks, I will ask other questions to either Mayor Roca or Alan Register, whoever it is deemed more appropriate for.
And.
Let me, let me go ahead and mute some folks. So I will mute everyone, and then if you do need to speak, then just unmute yourself, and we will go from there. I think that is all the housekeeping information I had. If there are anything else that I can answer, please feel free to shout out. But we are very pleased, as I mentioned, to be joined by Alan Register from Regions Bank, from Mayor Roca, on behalf of the Hoover Area Chamber of Commerce. And we are ready to start this week's. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Paul. I appreciate it. April, thank you, and to the chamber and all the chamber members for sponsoring this fifth town hall meeting. And Alan, we're grateful to have you on today. We've had over the past five weeks, business industries ranging from retail to residential, just across the board. And today, we'll be talking about banking. And we are proud to have Regions as one of our largest employers in the city of Hoover, has a quite a footprint here in our city, and we're grateful for that. Today, we invited Alan Register, who is the Executive Vice President of Commercial Banking, and he's the District Director. And Alan joined Regions in 2016. He's responsible for Alabama, Mississippi, Florida, and the Far East. He also serves as the Market Executive for Birmingham area. Alan is a 1986 graduate of Sanford University, with BS in Business Administration and Finance. And he's active in the community. We appreciate that part of him as well. He's on the Board of Directors for United Way of Central Alabama, Red Mountain Theater, Birmingham Business Alliance, and Park and Sanford University. So Alan, I appreciate, I know that you've been extremely busy. Your industry has been really wide open during this pandemic. So thank you for joining us. And if you would, just kind of share with us what's going on in the banking industry.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by saying a couple of things. One, this format is kind of new to me. So if I end up pressing a button or waving my arms in a way that distracts, I'll apologize upfront. I'm very apt to do that, right? The second thing is, you're going to hear me cough. I promise I do not have COVID-19, but I'm a horrible seasonal allergy sufferer. And so you will hear me, definitely hear me cough. In fact, I'll try to do it the appropriate way. But, but thank. Some of the folks that make up the community of Hoover. And you kind of hit on it, Mr. Mayor, but the community of Hoover is very critical and very strategic to us here at Regions. We actually have in Hoover over 3,600 Regions associates across nine different locations. Now, seven of those are our branches in the Hoover area. And then, of course, we have the two large office complexes there in the River Chase Office Park as well. So 3,600 Regions associates, but then we also support a number of contractors and other folks that are very critical to Regions that are on site with us right there, mainly, mainly in those two large office complexes. So when you add it all up, it really ends up being over 4,000 people that represent Regions right there in the community of Hoover. And so I think that in and of itself would, would pretty much signal how critical Hoover is to us. It's critical in other ways as well, because a number of our associates live in Hoover. And so they educate their children there in Hoover. So just a, just a very, very important part of what we do here every day at Regions. So I'll say another thing that, and this really harkens me back to, to, unfortunately, a horrible day. It was April 27th, 2011. I think we all remember the day that the tornadoes came through. And in the aftermath of all of that, I think what came to the forefront in our community is that we are a brothers keepers community. We deeply care about one another, particularly when the chips down. And I just have seen tremendous displays of community, which I love seeing that, but tremendous displays of community, really, really across my name market, which is here in Birmingham. Everything from going up, seeing somebody go up to order a curbside meal that might cost $10 and throwing a $20 tip, you know, into a jar, just little things that, again, I think really evidence us as a, as a brothers keepers community. And so, so Hoover is part of us, and obviously, we are part of Hoover, and we're extremely, extremely proud of that. But if I can, let me give a little update, pardon me, on how we're operating right now. Our branches are open. They are drive-through and then in the lobby by appointment only. Okay? So drive-through and then by appointment only. So if you, if you need to see someone in branch, you know, by the way, let me go ahead right now and give everybody my email address. Feel free to contact me, and I'll try to follow up. But it's alan, A-L-A-N, dot register, R-E-G-I-S-T-E-R, at regions.com. So put that out there so that, again, if anyone has any needs and wants to send directly my way. But, so we're using our drive-throughs. Lobbies are by appointment only. I'm going to brag a little bit on our video ATMs. And this is a service that we've actually expanded to cover Saturdays and Sundays and evenings as well. And this is, if you're familiar with this, where you go through the drive-through to one of the ATMs. And you're actually, you know, when you log in, you're actually talking to an individual who, by the way, is seated right there in Hoover, that is a Regions associate. And the one little brag I'll put on it, as you can imagine, we've seen a lot more activity in those video ATMs. I actually have a somewhat personal story around that, in that my wife told me about, Alan, I went in there and I had a $100 bill, and I was able to exchange it for $520. I said. So seeing a lot more usage of those video ATMs. I'll pivot a little bit to some commentary around the CARES Act, and particularly the Paycheck Protection Program that was part of that CARES Act. I just, I just could not be more proud of our teams here at Regions in, in the way that everybody just, again, I go back to that brothers keepers concept, where everyone just stepped up and were literally working nights and weekends to help get the PPP applications processed for these small businesses, to get the money in the hands of these small businesses. And it was really a, an effort that starts with technology. It goes into our bankers in our branches, our bankers that are our commercial bankers out calling on the marketplace. It involves several hundreds of associates here at Regions that during, I don't know, probably a four-week, maybe five-week span of time, and by the way, it's still ongoing, I'll touch on that at the moment. But over a four to five-week span of time, just seeing, seeing tremendous effort on the part of our teams. And I could, I could go on and on about individual stories of where our bankers ended up getting in a conversation with a small business owner and working through to get an application approved and to get the funding for that small business. It may be a business that has three employees, nine employees. I personally had a very uplifting moment where I was working with a company that had nine employees. And when I was able to call the company and say, hey, you know, we've got your SBA authorization, we'll be getting funding, they, this individual started crying on the phone. That, Alan started crying on the phone. You know, it was just, just a really rewarding experience. And I, again, just could not be more proud of our teams. We are still accepting applications. We're accepting them two ways. One is in our branches, and then the other is through our commercial bankers. So again, if you have any questions about that, feel free to email me. I'll get you to the right place. And the reason that we're doing it through those two channels is to try to make sure that as we enter those applications, the data associated with those applications, that they're complete, and that ideally, they could, they could go through, you know, fairly quickly. And so, so that's really why we're, we're focusing on those two avenues. So if you have any, any of those, if anybody on the call has any questions around that, certainly feel free to reach out to me. When I say we're accepting applications, there is one caveat, and that is that we need for you to have been a Regions customer prior to March 1, 2020. So I will throw that caveat out there. And one other thing I'll mention, I checked on this as recently as this morning, as of last night, the, the SBA on round two, what we're calling round two, was $192 billion monies that have been, and I'll call it allocated or claimed, if you will. And so there's, in the $310 billion program, there's, there's still money out there. And again, we are still accepting and processing those applications. And in addition to that, we, we have our standard Regions customer care programs that, you know, if you contact us, that are designed around various forms of credit card relief and loan relief, those kinds of things. So just, just encourage everybody to be mindful of that as well. You know, in a time like this, in every, in every instance, the concern of our customers is paramount to all of our associates. That concern goes even further now relative to the safety of our customers, which is why we do, we're doing it the way we're doing it now with the drive-throughs and then the lobbies by appointment only. And so, but in, even in the midst of that, our bankers are still very focused on listening and trying to provide the right kinds of solutions for our customers. And so, and we will continue to do that. We'll certainly continue to do that as, as we go forth. And, you know, what we've learned, and I'll touch on that a little bit more as well, but one of the things we've learned is, and we knew this, but, but it really comes about, you know, in a time like this, is every customer is different in the way that they, they want to conduct business with the bank. And so, you know, we, we use terms like omni-channel, which means you may prefer to do your banking, you know, on, on your phone. You may prefer to do it over the phone. You may prefer to do it in person. And so we, you know, our folks are trained and equipped and ready to provide a lot of different types of solutions for our customers. And so that is something certainly that, that we're devoted to and will continue to be devoted to. So kind of a high-level overview there. I will say this, that your bank, Regions, is, is in a strong position, very solid foundation. And, and so we're, we're ready. We're prepared to help the needs of our community. And as I go through some additional items, I'll, I'll touch on some of the things, you know, that we've done. Mr. Mayor, I have some questions that have already been put forward. Would you like for me to, to go through those?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, I mean, I, but I think when you're speaking as well, this is really the banking industry. Is what you're talking about is pretty generic throughout the banking industry. Would that be correct?
I would, I would expect that to be the case. The, the industry is, is, you know, this is a different scenario than 2008, 2009. And, you know, I think our industry is, is prepared to help lead the country out of this, you know. And so, so yes, I, I do believe that.
Please, we have a few, but go ahead and, and take care of.
I'll hit on, I'll hit on two or three that I suppose, that I expect probably on some of your folks' minds. One is around the forgiveness aspect of the Paycheck Protection Program loans. And so what I need to do there is I need to direct everyone to a couple of different websites. One is sba.gov, and the other is treasury.gov. And if you get, you know, comment on the treasury.gov in particular. If you go to that website, there is a red banner up near the top. And if you'll click on that banner, there's a good bit of information there, various links to PDF files that include a lot of questions around the PPP program. And so what we're, what we're doing is, the best, best advice I can give there. Websites, reach through that material, become familiar with that material, reach out to be it an accountant or a lawyer or consultant to, to, to really understand what is required to get forgiveness of that loan, even if it means partial forgiveness perhaps in some cases. And I can tell you this, that one of the most important things that will be necessary is to keep really good records of how that money was spent from the time the borrower received that money. That's, that's going to be very critical. So, so do that. And then also, just to touch on that one more time, the, the websites that I just mentioned, don't just go there one time. Go there pretty frequently, because they are updating, and when I say the SBA and the Treasury, they are updating that information on a, on a pretty frequent basis. So, so that's the answer on that one, you know. Another question is, what about a round three of funding? We don't know if that is going to occur. We probably hear the same things that, that you all hear in the news, that there are various different programs being, being thrown about. And so we just don't know at this point, I think is the best way to say that. Another question is, are there, are there certain sectors that are, that are perhaps doing better than others? And, and my comment on that would be, very broadly, is, is how we try to look at these things, because every customer in every company is different. You know, just different management, different ways of going about things. So my, my comments here are really of a, of a broad nature. But, but we are, we hear about hospitality, we hear about travel as being industries that, that, you know, have, have had some difficulty. We also hear about technology and streaming as industries that are, that are doing quite well. You know, right now, I happen to have some technicians at my home, working on my home to try to speed up my internet access, to facilitate perhaps being able to, to work remotely more frequently. So, so those are, those are ones that have done quite well. What we find consistently is that as we talk to our customers, they, they want to know, what are the financial tools in your expertise that can help us to, to get through this? And so what we, what our bankers are trained to do is to really, again, I go back to the word listen, Mayor. I mean, that, that's the most important thing that we can do, is listen and, and ask meaningful questions, open-ended questions that, that will help us understand that customer situation better, so that we can then hopefully bring the, bring the solutions to bear. Mr. Mayor, one of, one of the thing, and this is the last question that I'll cover that has been put forward to us, but a question's been asked about how this perhaps could impact our community involvement here at Regions. And what I would say to that is, be it, be it volunteerism or donations to various entities, we've seen really robust activity around both of those, a lot of volunteerism. And, and it really goes back to, we, we are avidly devoted to our communities. We, we talk about around here that we are only as strong as our communities, the communities in which we operate. And so when you think about it, you know, we, we work there, we live there, we, we worship there, we educate our children there, we shop there. And so we want those communities to be strong and vibrant. And, excuse me, two things that we've done that I'll point out. One is Regions Bank and also the Regions Foundation, we've committed roughly $5 million to our communities. And so, so real dollars that have gone back into our various communities. And then another thing is, we've actually taken some of our broadcast and digital advertising space and seeing the need for like, specifically like food banks, and saying, okay, well, let's allocate, rather than that being a Regions pitched piece, let's make that a pitch around the food banks. And so that's something we've done as well. And then I'll close with this relative to my comments, but one of the, one other website that I would love for everyone to go look at, because it's inspiring, and it's, and it's a, it's a Regions site, but it's, it's inspiring around, I think, what our communities are doing. And that's what we call Doing More Today. So just if you want to, www.doinemortoday.com. And I know I'm inspired by those stories, and I think your folks there would be as well. So with that, I'll kick it back over to you. And by the way, Mayor, I did bring my mask that my mom made for me, so.
Mine as well. Paul, any, any questions from the audience right now?
Not right now. One thing I do want to point out is, we've done this a couple of weeks, as everybody knows, and for whatever reason, today must be a popular Zoom time, because we are having some, some lag and some glitches. So I appreciate everybody's patience with that. Actually, Alan, you were, were very clear, but I'm getting some feedback that at times the mayor and I are not as, as clear as we've been. So again, thank you to everybody for your patience. If you do have any questions, please chime in, but I believe the mayor has a couple of questions or comments that he'd like to share.
Well, you mentioned that there is still money available. And so, and talk of the, the importance of keeping good records. You say money's available, that's throughout the industry though, correct? It's not necessarily just at Regions. That's industry-wide, that's, that's countrywide. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Very good question. Again, in what we call round two of the PPP program, the, the initial round was $349 billion that was allocated. In this round, it's $310 billion. It's structured a little bit differently in the way that some dollars are carved out just for community banks, but, but it's $310 billion. And again, last night, as of last night, I believe that number was $193 that had been taken, taken down, so.
I, just before we came on, I was reading an article from the BBA. It was talking about the PPP, and it's not designed to tax.
Sorry, say that again, Mayor.
The PPP loans are not necessarily designed to be taxable. However, a rule established by the IRS on April 30th, small businesses need to, need to make sure that they're using it correctly and not deducting that off their income tax in a way that it appears to be double-dipping.
Yes, sir.
The article goes on to say that, that some businesses, C corporations could see a 21% increase in their taxable income, and S corporations 37%. So that's pretty important. That's a significant increase if you don't, if you don't do that correctly.
Yeah, I, I just cannot reiterate enough, going to those two websites and really perusing that information, more than perusing it, going with a fine-tooth comb, actually, I think would serve everyone very well. I will tell you this, I, I get up pretty much every day and I hit the treasury.gov website just to see if there have been any updates. So I, I, yes, thank you for bringing that up. Major emphasis on keeping up to date on, on where the rules and the law stands right now.
Alan, we're, we're starting to hear occasionally about individuals who were not approved for an SBA loan. Have you been able to determine if there was any reasoning or delineation between those who were approved and weren't approved? Is there any commonality if those aren't getting approved, on maybe how folks could better increase their chances?
Yeah, Paul, my response to that would be, there are certain questions in an application that would disqualify an applicant. And so if, if at any point they go through and, and, you know, as we all should truthfully answer those questions, and it's a, it's a disqualifier, then those, those would not have been approved. But beyond that, again, I'll reiterate, there are, there are quite a few dollars available. We cannot anticipate that those dollars will be available forever. You know, they, we, we do think they will continue to, I mean, it's, it's bleeding away every day, and so, and will continue to do so, as, again, money is getting into the hands of these small businesses.
So Alan, in terms of applying for the PPP, one of the things we did early on is to provide our business help line. We felt like there were many small businesses out there that was like, go to this website and just be overwhelmed. And I know early on, it was pretty difficult navigating that. And so I don't know if the denials were significantly high early on, and if they were, has that learning curve, so to speak, improved where it's not so difficult now to fill the forms out? Even the banks have learned, you know, as you go along, how to make the process easier. So have you seen, I guess, a more success rate?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think, I think that's fair. And again, that goes back to one of the comments I made early on, where all of the banks, not just us, but all the banks really stood this whole process up in a pretty, pretty quick manner of time. And, and so, so it's pretty, pretty remarkable, you know, just the way it's all come about. But, but I think that, again, as evidenced by, you know, the success rate around getting, getting approvals, I think there has been improvement.
Well, it's a, you admit, the outpouring of support in the community, and I, I believe it was last week, we had a gentleman on here that had a small business, a brand-new small business in Hoover. I can remember going and cutting a ribbon, and Cardell Davis, they own Cake and Bear, and they're really cheap rocks. Talked about specifically what you said, the outpouring of the community, and how they just supported, and it kept them going. And here was the encouraging thing, they had expansion plans, and you would have thought that this would have slowed that down, but indeed, they are going forward with opening another business in August.
Oh, wow.
That's encouraging to hear that, because, yes, I received a call from a newly opened restaurant in Hoover, and they're not going to experience that same inflation, so they're going to close both of their bits. So there's a lot of sadness there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Whole, whole situation.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me make one other comment around the, I'll call it the success rate. If you recall, when I said that we were accepting applications two ways, either through our branches, which again, is by appointment, or through one of our commercial bankers. Again, the reason we do that is, is because ideally, the, the information on the application is fully accurate to be able to push on to the SBA and get that approval. So we did make that decision, pardon me, we did make that decision as we decided to kind of get, get our application portal open back up a couple of weeks ago.
You know, as, you had to crank up the loan process quickly, you also had to crank up work at home, operationally moving, and so I know that you probably have a date when you, when you're, when y'all will return. But how do you see that changing the way we work? I, I know that I've heard various CEOs from large companies that talked about, you know, we can work in home, and we may start allowing some. How do you just see that affecting your industry? And then what kind of impact do you think it's going to have on commercial real estate?
Yeah. Well, one, let me say something I'm really proud about, first of all, is I've seen our teamwork with, with our group is just. Our, our teamwork with, with our group has just been outstanding and whether they're working from home or, you know, wherever, it really, it really has just been outstanding to watch that. You know, if, we have had to adapt and, and again, our, our number one priority is safety, right? So for our customers and for our employees or for our associates, the number one priority is safety, so we are very closely monitoring the CDC guidelines around, you know, returning to work and taking a very serious look at that and again, those are things that, that are being looked at daily, you know, it's not something that we say, oh, well, it's Friday, let's go look at this, it's literally probably multiple times per day actually, Mr. Mayor, but. But you know, all I can tell you, when it comes to commercial real estate, I can tell you this, we have a strong business in Hoover and we plan to continue to have a strong business in Hoover. So I suspect that's really what one of the questions you may have there, but, but we have.
That's the point of it here, to be honest.
Yeah, we've built a very strong business there and we do not have any plans to change that.
Well, that's good, it's the, it's, it's certainly interesting times for us and Paul, do you have any other questions out there that?
I do, I do, so Philip Corley, who I believe some of us know from, from, from the law firm, has asked a couple of questions. First, which sectors of the economy do you see recovering the fastest and which might be slower? What are you seeing from the bank's perspective?
Yeah, relative to which ones may recover more quickly or more slowly, I, we feel like we're still too early into this Philip, right now, to make a lot of really accurate prognostications, there, there are a lot of, there's a lot of speculation out there and there, there are a lot of opinions and forecasts, but at this point, we feel it, we feel it best just to kind of, kind of sit back and, and see how this thing plays out because it is still very, very early in the process. And then what was the other question, Paul?
Which ones might be slow, well faster, slower, you answered that and then what are you seeing from the bank's perspective as, as far as, I, I believe he's asking, he can clarify, but the bank itself, how has your business been up or down? I know you're doing a lot of loans, but outside of that, what are you seeing compared to normal times?
Yeah, once again, we, we've been fully devoted to really helping our customers and our clients get through, not all of them getting through the PPP process, but trying to adapt in a way that we can meet the needs, the immediate needs of our customers, be it consumers or, or commercial entities. And, and so that's, that's been our focus at, at this point in time and so that's what we're going to continue to focus on for the time being and, and we are, we are hopeful and I personally am hopeful, but I just think time will tell.
And then last question is, what about businesses who need immediate assistance and have not received their funds at this time?
If, if there's a specific ask around that, I would love for someone to email me and I will follow up with that directly.
Good, excellent, I will tell you Philip, from a hospitality standpoint, it's not recovering as quickly as we all like, although we did get some, some good news this week in a booking of a wedding for the next few weeks and with the opening of, of gatherings of 10 or more, it is picking back up, but I, I promise you, we'll be one of the slower ones based on what we're seeing to, to come back to normal.
And I, I just had one other, then one other question, but if you would talk about, so you had to crank up the PPP process, there had to be an enormous amount of red tape, government regulations, things along that line. How did y'all navigate that to, to, you know, to get through this red?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it, it, it was a pretty fluid process and we all understood that because the end goal was to get the money into the hands of the small businesses and so as, as the law was written and then passed to the SBA and the SBA interprets the law and then passes the information to us as to what is required. It was, it was non-stop really in the, in, in the communication between our industry and the SBA. And so getting it all stood up was, was trying, as, as the SBA was trying to interpret it, we as the, we as an industry, we're trying to get the information from the SBA, get it stood up in a way that would be hopefully accurate, where we can validate things properly with again, that ultimate goal of just getting, getting money in the hands of businesses as quickly as possible. I go back to, pardon me, the example of the individual that literally cried on the phone with me. The reason that individual cried on the phone is because they had payroll due on Friday and they got their money on Thursday. And so you put real, real life examples to that and those are, those are all over the place and perhaps even some of the people participating on the call here, but getting the money in the hands of, of those individu, or I'm sorry, those businesses was paramount and I just couldn't be more proud of, of, I can only speak for Regions, but I can tell you this, I, I'd want every one of these people on my team and fortunately, they are, so.
Well, I, I appreciate it, we, we actually have heard that kind of response from across the banking industry and, and we're so thankful that Regions, but indeed, the banking industry itself, you were so willing to step up and to lead the country out of what's going to be, leading us out of this crisis and I, I, I think what I took from what you said about working with the government, that you were able to navigate some of the bureaucracy and that you saw the federal government trying to bend or relax or whatever to make this happen and that's, that's all good news. So with that, we will just let you know. We will take the information that you've given us and put it on our website, put those links on our website. The whole purpose in these town halls, townhouses has been to get information out.
Yes.
And that's what we've done today and I'm so grateful that you would spend this, we're about 45 minutes into it and certainly, if you have anything else you'd like to share, if there's anyone else online, Paul, that wants to share anything, if not, we will move towards closing.
Sure, we can open it up, but as of right now, no, I don't see anything. And Alan, just on, on behalf of the Hoover Area Chamber of Commerce, want to thank you for your time, we have recorded this as well, so that will be posted as well for anybody who didn't have the opportunity to join us, so before Mayor and Alan wrap up, I will remind everyone to join us next week. I apologize that the topic is not in front of me for what next week is, but we are going to continue to have our calls on Wednesday at 11, so we do hope you'll join us.
Thank you, Paul, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Greg and Philip Corley, thank even you for your good questions, I appreciate those.
Thank you so much, Alan.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Yes, sir.